Roll call, please.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Wenzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Levens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We now enter the first segment of public comment. Are there citizens who wish to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move into resolutions, special tributes, and presentation. Item number one is a presentation by the Monroe County Museum Director Andrew Clark and Museum Board Chairman Brian Egan.
Chairman Commissioner Brian Egan, Chair of the Monroe County Museum Board of Trustees. So if you may recall, in February of this year, we came to you with this project, and we've done some due diligence as you've asked us to do since that time. I just wanted to refresh the group in that this has all come out of a strategic plan that we had been working on pre-pandemic, and we have put a lot of this in place. So the points of our strategic plan, there were several actionable objectives, and this museum expansion plan really hits on a lot of those components: enhance and expand educational offerings, revamp and refresh and modernize the exhibits, increase stewardship and accessibility to our collections and assets, enhance the guest experience and services, foster increased engagement through hands-on workshops and other activities. And we've already started doing many of these things in an effort to sort of anticipate our future. And then also to diversify a lot of our offerings that are non-traditional museum, just a way to reinvent ourselves and to think about innovative ways to bring the community to the museum for maybe other but related functions. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Andy. We're going to just do a refresher on the actual plan itself.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Wenzel and Commissioners. So we're going to, some of this stuff you've seen before, like Brian mentioned, we brought this up to you a couple of months ago. But we're going to start out with a little bit of refresher. Of course, that's the Monroe County Museum that sits right on Monroe Street. We welcomed our first visitor in 1979, sorry, 1939, and we moved into that facility in 1972 due to the courtesy of the Lazy Boy Corporation. And here's a rendering of what the facility would look like if the new expansion is allowed to go ahead. You can see right there on there, that's the addition that we're speaking of nestled right next to the RRCA. This rendering shows a little bit of the distinction between the current building as well as the addition to the building, just so you can kind of get a sense that it's not going to look exactly the same, which is kind of in accordance with a historical preservation and whenever you build onto a historic building. But it's going to take cues from the new facility, the old facility and the new facility. Just another straight-on view. It gives you a little bit of a look into our lobby area. And then this gives a really good view of how the addition would sit in our current parking lot space that we plan on, we would like to put the addition at. You can see that our property goes right up to the RRCA building. In our thoughts, we did not want to go all the way directly up to the building for the purposes of, we didn't think it was most primarily a neighborly thing to do because their patrons need to have access. And, you know, for generations, people have been attending shows there, and they've had the access area. So you can get a clear shot, and if you look, probably can't see it on that slide, but it goes all the way back, you'd be looking at the 1812 memorial that the Historical Society put in a few years ago. And then we've come into our entry area. One of the highlights of this space, one, a unified entry, which we don't have at the present. We have two separate entrances, one for visitors who want to use the steps, and then the handicap entrance is at the back of the museum. This is graded in such a manner so that way it's an all-access entry point to the museum for all visitors to be able to get into the museum pretty easily. And the entrance is a little bit more sheltered from the storms than what we have now. Well, right now, you're right into the front lobby of the museum. And if you look to your left, you can see where there's the connection into the current building. So this is the lobby guest services area of the proposed addition. Then this is kind of the back portion of that first floor. We've got some extended gallery space right off of the lobby area as well as amenities, restrooms, elevator, that sort of thing. Then this gets us up to our second floor. You can see you can take the stairway to the left there or the elevator that's at the back of the hallway. This exhibit area is, would be adjacent to our new archives room, which is something we don't have at present. We have, our reading room is also our processing room, our staff office area. So it's a shared space between the public and museum staff. With this proposal, what we've developed is a separate reading room that allows the public to come in. It's larger than what we have right now, but also it's sequestered so that way staff can have private offices, places to work, and have a little added level of security. And then this is the third floor, which, if you notice the earlier images, there's only two floors to the county museum. The addition would have a third floor, and this would be our mixed-use area, perfect for field trips, rental exhibits, parties. And if you guys approve it, maybe County of Monroe Board of Commissioners Board meeting one night. But perhaps the thing that everyone really enjoys adding on, when we've shopped this around a few people, is the terrace that is out on the front of the building. So this is looking off of Monroe Street. Everyone comments on, wow, this would be a great addition. It's a publicly, you know, accessible terrace. It's, obviously, it's not the first terrace in Monroe County or downtown Monroe, but it's a nice public space for a variety of events. People say, oh, man, I can see myself sitting there reading a book or grabbing a cup of coffee or watching the fair parade. And that person might have been me, but other people have said that to me as well. And then just what it looks like at night. And then this is the proposed back of the building. You can see the shared pathway between the RRCA and the museum, the extension off the back, and a new dock. The dock that was built there was great for the post office in the 20th century, kind of a little, doesn't fit our needs now for the 21st century, and we would really like to have a new space so we can get items in and out of the museum a little bit more conveniently. And this is just that rendering again showing the museum with the proposed addition. Overall, we're looking at some changes in square footage, getting close to 14,000 square feet of space. One of the things that was important to us when we've been working through these plans is making sure that they check the boxes off of the strategic plan that Brian talked about earlier. And you can see in our core areas that we were looking to gain space: storage, archives, exhibits, and vents. We all have some significant additions to each of those categories. And we feel very confident that this, like the previous work that we've done, this would be a generational project. And this is just a visualization of the funding letter essentially that Mike provided to you in your packets. So you can see the breakdown, the money from the museum as well as the money from the county. One component that we had hoped for, and when we were here last, was that grant from the state of Michigan. Unfortunately, late Friday afternoon, we were notified that we are not a recipient of that money. So that's currently where we're sitting.
The enumeration of the impact is many-fold, but just looking at the top drivers here, the economic development and long-term community investment, I do not believe there's been an investment like this in the county seat since the MB&amp;T building, now First Merchants, but I could be wrong. But this also enhances the quality of life and place-making, not only for our residents but visiting guests as well. So I think that impact also strengthens the community and regional relevance of this. But also, it's an anchor institution in the cultural heritage tourism of not only the city but the county itself. And it also provides an opportunity for increased formal and informal education. The value and impact of that, you know, can't be understated. But also, it's an anchor, we can be an anchor institution for the Monroe Link Plan, especially the arts, culture, and entertainment sectors of that. But also, we can become a core ingredient in synergizing the collaborations, the partnerships with the city, the battlefield, and the other countywide public and private stakeholders. And, you know, we'll never be a Smithsonian, we'll never be a Williamsburg, maybe we'll never be the Henry Ford. But I think as a core ingredient with all the other great things moving forward, we can become a destination and a force. And the mosaic of all of those together can be, you know, very profound, and I think equal and ranked to those other institutions. The other aspect, too, is this will be an unprecedented cultural and heritage project for the America 250 commemoration in next year, 2026. I do not, I'm not aware of any other county in Michigan or many of the other states that would have an investment in their community for heritage, cultural tourism, and what have you for the America 250. So that would be an unprecedented thing. Lonny Bunch, the Smithsonian, the director of the Smithsonian Institution, had this great quote about museums cannot become community centers, but they can become the center of the community. And we can do this. We really can. So I'll turn it over to Mike unless there's questions at this point.
I think it would probably be appropriate before we entertain questions from board members to get a motion in a letter dated May 29, 2025, from Mr. Michael Basonic, Administrator Chief Financial Officer, recommending a financing plan for the museum addition slash renovation project. Could I get a motion on this? Moved by Huffman. Supported by Levens. Now we'll open it up to questions and further input from Mr. Basonic.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and thank you, Andy and Brian. We've been working away on this concept and bringing it hopefully to life for a couple of years now since the strategic plan was presented to the board, the museum trustees adopted that. Just, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I just want to go back, and Brian touched on some of these things, but I think it's really important that I convey this, this addition, this proposed addition between the existing building and the River Rays and Center for the Arts is kind of this expansion, but we're linking these two facilities together. You know, one of the things that we saw as an opportunity in our strategic economic development plan was in the sector of arts and culture. And certainly, Monroe County being the second oldest county in the state of Michigan has a big box of history that is part of our culture to be able to unbox and to be able to have more square footage, more exhibit space to tell our story. I think this is what this project speaks to. When you look at what is being attempted here is to not just have people, you have to come inside the building, but as you're walking from the back where the parking area is, and you're going to an event next door, or you're coming to an event at the museum, to see kind of the glass curtain front, if you will, the storefront of the things that are on display at the museum, you know, I think it just ties those two together. Brian talked a little bit about place-making. This is certainly that place-making effort to create that energy for events to come down. And we can certainly see these opportunities where there's an event at both locations. They're coordinating these activities together so that when people come down, it's not, well, I just came down for this and then I left. It's more that wow factor, that, wow, look at this addition. Brian talked a little bit about it again, and I'm just kind of reiterating some of these points. There's not another project like this that's going to take place, if this takes place across the state. It sets Monroe County as, Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, probably the leader when it comes to a museum facility like this. You've all traveled to other parts of our state. You've been to different counties. They may be an old home, a structure. That's their museum. Compare those to what we're talking about here. I mean, this is an incredible transformational project. Does it have some wow factor? Absolutely. When you look at the event space at the third floor and creating those opportunities, is it over the top? That's subjective. We view that as that wow factor for people to come in and say, look at Monroe County has. And I've heard people say, well, they're doing it over here. We could be doing it here. And I think when you look at that event space at the upper area, it's for education first and foremost, for Andy and his team to tell their story, to educate people on our history. But it does have a multi-use purpose up there for inviting people downtown, keeping people downtown, giving them a reason to come down for another event than maybe what's already there. And so all these things roll up into what's been presented to you this evening. We were disappointed that we weren't successful in the grant application, and so this is what we're left with. We're draining the museum legacy fund. So if you remember a lady by the name of Jean Smith, Jean Smith, Montana? Montana, 2017, checked for $700,000 and $7,500,000 now. Jesse, and before Jesse K., they've, you know, invested that, and we've had interest earning on that. And so it's about that amount. The museum fund contributing $300,000 towards it, and then we're left with the $6.9 million. That money that would come out of the county's unreserved fund balance, a one-time expenditure, but a one-time investment into a project such as this. Construction, you know, we would have to go through a process of schematic design, getting up to construction drawings, and then bidding. That will determine the cost of the project. These are, you know, we're going on an estimate. The estimate, I think, is good estimate. I think it's conservative, but we were here a couple of months ago with a road commission project, and their prices came in good. So the market's, you know, a little here, a little bit there. We really won't know what this is until we complete that process, and then we'll know what the project would cost. But in terms of financing, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, that's what it would, it would look like. Essentially, I told Andy and Brian, well, don't come into the Board of Commissioners unless you're putting out everything that you've got towards this project. Don't hold back. And so that's why the legacy fund would be drained, and then we're taking as much out of the museum fund balance as we can, still leaving some money in there for contingencies and things that come up from there. You may ask, well, they have a millage. The millage is .15 mils. It generates a little over $1 million, so there's not a lot of access for, you know, financing this and paying the money back. And so if something changes over time, certainly, any board, this board or a future board, could look at that and say, hey, we financed this project. We'd like to capture some of that money back, certainly have that opportunity to do it. But we wouldn't come to you unless we had a plan, a financing plan, and then, of course, the market will determine what the final cost would be. And that's it, Mr. Chairman. We're able to answer any questions that we think you can ask, or if not tonight, we'll certainly come back.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yeah, I'm certainly in favor of this, and I'm thinking along the way, you might be able to find some more grant opportunities to help pay for this.
Yeah, we'll certainly continue to look at that if those opportunities are there. It's been fairly limited in the museum arena, even talking about congressional earmarks. They just, they don't measure up, and so we didn't even apply for that because when we talked to Wahlberg's office, they said it wouldn't meet it. And they're linking up more of the, you know, where's the federal nexus to federal funds that are coming into an earmark, you know, where is that? And they just can't demonstrate it there, not especially when you have a national battlefield facility right in our own community across the, across town.
Commissioner Levens?
Where does the county's unreserved fund balance stand presently?
We haven't presented the final, but final preliminaries, about $54 million.
So this would represent about 20% of that?
Yeah. And so, you know, when you look at that, by the time this project would be completed, we'd have another year of operations. I'm not saying we would generate, you know, what we had. Keep in mind, you know, last year, we had American Rescue Plan funds that, you know, there's an accounting process. I don't want to say more than that. The accounting process ended up that that money was deposited into fund balance, like $6.5, $6.5 million. So part of that is in this as well, almost, almost funding that. So, but that's where some of the increase in fund balances come from year over year.
When would we have to make, so this is, you have the communication of approving a financing plan. We still have our feelers and our radar open for other grant opportunities, understanding that they're probably limited and not likely forthcoming. When do we have to make the final, final decision to pull the financial trigger?
That's up to the board. But I want to convey to you, you know, in a clear way that opportunities for other funding is very, very limited. And for us to say that, yeah, we're going to go out, and we think that there's this, we don't think that there's much out there. I mean, Andy looks at this all the time. He's in contact with the other associations in the state in terms of what's out there and what's available, and there's, there's not much. And so I'm not going to convey to you that, oh, yeah, there's probably another opportunity out there when it's not. I mean, like, is there fish here? They're not biting, so we're not even putting the pole in the water.
Why do you think that is?
Could I address the grant item for, so the grant that we came to you for earlier this year, that was a one-time $9 million grant that the state of Michigan did through the Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity. It was an unusual grant that the state invests in museums that they don't own. Brian was referring to funding projects. You may remember, it came to you for a much smaller opportunity, about $50,000 a few weeks ago. That was part of $2 million. That's going to cover two years. That is being put forward for the American 250 project. And obviously, you know, nearly $7 million is much greater than anything the state is contributing towards local heritage. Federal sources have really just dried up. All the mechanisms have all been defunded, so you wouldn't probably expect any sort of federal dollars to be coming through.
I just had a few questions.
Sure.
What's the, were you, did you have?
No, no, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I didn't see. You sure? I didn't, I thought I saw it on your slide, but then you went past it. What's the new square footage and what's the existing square footage of the building for the total?
$21,000 to $35,000.
Are there any updates being done outside of what you included in the letter on the existing building? I saw some alarmed stuff, some electrical. Are we going to take any of that money and maybe look and see what might need to be done on the older part of the building?
Sure. What's included in any kind of a building like this, you've got a code review and then code compliance. So you've got fire protection systems that are required, both wet and alarm systems. You've got electrical system tie-in. So where you're tying in, in addition to the existing building, you've got all that kind of renovation work that goes on in there. So there is work in the existing building to be able to tie all this together and end up with a free flow between the addition and what's already there. So yes, code compliance, HVAC systems. It's a complete project. The other thing is, you know, the space is tight, you know, so that adds some complexity and challenge to the work. Shoring and foundation, when you're excavating that close to another building, we want to make sure that, you know, that goes correctly. And so there's some additional precautions and cost considerations in for that as well.
Is the basement, the subgrade included in the square footage on that?
Yes. Yes, it includes the basement.
That's going to be used for storage or?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Primarily, yes, for our collection storage. We have, as you may be aware, we have another facility over on Third Street. Part of the long-term plan is to consolidate everything into one building and get rid of the Third Street facility.
And I'm assuming we've looked at all the, you know, extra square footage. There's going to be extra annual costs. We've looked at that and said, yeah, with our current millage, you know, utilities, all the things that go along with, you know, almost doubling your square footage, saying we're good with that budget-wise?
We feel very comfortable. When the millage was renewed a few years ago, it was, we had an increase in our millage from when it was originally passed. We've been working with the idea that there is a new building on the horizon in the near future, so we started baking numbers into our budgets to accommodate that happening because we've been, as we said, we've been working on this for a while. So I feel very confident that we'd cover it with what we have now.
Thank you.
If I may, so let me follow up on that. And that's a great question. If you recall, we came to the board in 2022 when we looked at another property in the downtown area as consideration for expanding the museum operations and exhibit all the things that we talked about. That was simply, you know, cost prohibitive from a number of reasons. But in addition, when you're operating kind of a main museum facility from two different locations, that just adds inefficiency, complexities, you know, two buildings to take care of. And so we'd looked at that. We'd looked at some other properties, and so we kind of exhausted the available market of properties in the downtown area. And so, you know, that's when we decided, like, we're looking at all these other places, you know, what do we have available on the existing property? And that started the effort to look at the feasibility of what would it take to add what we need onto the existing site? Does that make more sense? And that's why we've evolved to the point where we're at this evening and have done all the analysis behind this to say that, you know, this made more sense from an operational standpoint. So I think it addresses the utilities, the operational costs, staffing costs that all go into it in this kind of an approach versus a separate facility. Now, that's not to say that the museum operations don't have activities that take place at other places. They do, but those are more seasonable, more targeted programming, whereas this is, this is the mainstay. This is where it all happens. This is the hub of the operations, administrative space. And from here, you know, things go out from the museum operations to the, to the other programs and services across the county.
I definitely agree. The one location is more efficient. I think overall, it's much, much better planned. My train of thought was just making sure that everyone's done their due diligence. We know that this new footprint will fit into the budget. We don't want to get into a situation where we're a year or two down the road and go, oh, we didn't realize the cost of this, and now we need to raise the millage, or ask for a new one, or, that's all been done, I'm saying. And you're saying, Andy, you feel comfortable with those projections, looking at the costs of that new footprint and what comes along with it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, very much. So conversations we've had, we've been taking care of, including that stuff.
I assume so. I just have to ask publicly.
Commissioner Asper?
Yeah, I would say I'm not really so much for millages because it's just one more way to get around raising property taxes. And I just think it's not good for seniors and poor people, and you already have a sizable millage. But I was wondering what projects garnered the state money over this project, and if they gave you any feedback as to why they did not?
Not yet. Like I said, it came out late Friday, and it was a simple email that says you did not get money. I, well, I mean, it wasn't that exactly, but it was to the point. We, we knew it was going to be uphill battle, to be honest. We knew it was going to be super competitive. As I said, this is a very unusual amount of money. The fact that the top amount was $1 million, that's a big attraction for anybody, especially museums. I think some, there are some very different factors. I think one of the big things, it was a department that doesn't handle museum or history in the state that was overseeing it. I think that was an issue. One thing that we had some slight concern about, that there was, there was a component, significantly scoring component, that was DEI-based, that thought that could probably be a hang-up for us. But those are some of the factors that, you know, that's just speculation. They didn't say why. But we knew, you know, it was, they gave a very short timeline at Christmas. So it was, it was, they released it maybe a couple of weeks before Christmas, and then it was due at the end of January, which is, I think, a pretty tight grant cycle. due at the end of January, which is, I think, a pretty tight grant cycle to turn around on. But that's, like I said, that's just speculation. I don't have an exact reason why they said it was, we didn't receive it.
Okay, and I just had one to follow up. So, you know, we're talking about the future here. So if we made this commitment from this reserve, there would be the commitment, but the payouts wouldn't be until, you know, each part of the project is done right, so that there would be opportunity for some other monies, I'm, you know, praying, some other monies to come in during that time also, right? So, I mean, we're not just giving you 6.9 and, you know.
We like to be very optimistic that, yes, there would be other opportunities as well.
Okay. And then we would be just doing payouts, just like they normally do for construction.
Right. We're not taking the money. You know, we'll establish, we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit. But in a normal, you know, capital planning program, we would, you know, we'd set up the accounting for it, and the draws would come only as they're needed. The rest would reside, you know, Jesse and his office and our office worked very closely on what's it look like for, what do we need for cash? What's the cash flow look like? And so we would work closely with them so that every opportunity to generate additional interest is going to be generated on all those dollars until they're actually metered out to pay money going forward. So, you know, maybe a comfortable process would be to begin the design phase without a commitment. I mean, it's still going to be a commitment to do the project. You know, these are estimates. I'd certainly hope that the estimates hold and that we, you know, through the detailed planning and detailed design work, that we can come up with some creative ideas to maybe reduce some of those costs somewhere. I'm not saying that we can, but I certainly think that, you know, that's one of the things that we would be looking at. And then, you know, then it goes to bid, and we see, you know, we're going to look, you know, when's the best time to bid? You know, we may, we may wait. We may wait. We may do the design work and, you know, and then bid the project later this year. We don't, you know, we've got tariffs on steel and some other things that, you know, there's not a lot in the project, but there's some. And so those are consultations with your professionals to look at, when's the best opportunity? When do we get the best value? What's, where's the best bang for our buck? So we'd certainly be looking at all of those things and hopefully deliver a project for less than what's outlined for the estimate. But the first phase would be, you know, developing the bidding documents, through schematic design, putting all the meat on the bone, so to speak. And then you've got a project that goes out for bid, and then see where the contractors come back in at it.
Commissioner Heinzler.
You guys got an estimated value on Third Street?
Uh, we, we do.
Would there be an opportunity to return anything to the general budget out of that sale?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, you know, part of that process is kind of a, there's some decluttering that's going to be involved with that. There's some value in the structure itself. But for our purposes, it would be raised, excavated, and available, you know, corner lot, hopefully for sale that is suitable for housing. But again, that's another one of those things where they got operations over there. It's not really conducive for the exhibits. They've gone through a process where they're trying to reduce the exhibits that really aren't part of the museum mission. I mean, we can't be a museum for all history. And so part of it is targeted. And so some of the other stuff, it's, we could go on a tour over there, you'd see some interesting stuff from the Enrico Fermi one, some of the old control panels. There's all kinds of stuff over there. But these are things that just would be disposed of. And then the, you know, but there are some things that they still need to consolidate all of their storage and all of their exhibits. But the point is, yes, it would be disposed of, raised, sold, and the proceeds go back into the, into the project fund.
From time to time, we do have people asking to purchase the property because it is a warehouse in a residential district. So we feel very confident it would sell.
And we're trying to be good neighbors there as well. No matter where we're at, in a park, wherever, we're trying to be good neighbors, and we want to get that out of there. It doesn't belong there.
Commissioner Huffman.
Yeah, just a couple of questions quick. Back to the building. What, if you have a social, how many people, fire code-wise, can utilize one level or all levels or?
We haven't, I don't think we've gotten that far.
Not that far yet?
Yeah. I think all building, you could probably put 500.
And then what, who's?
Maybe not that. No. The whole building? Oh.
Yeah.
I think, well, there's 100, 150 floors.
I'm looking at 35,000 square feet, you know, probably a couple hundred maximum in the exhibit and viewing space.
Who's our architectural firm right now? We got, are we working with Kohler or?
No, this was through a proposal, RFP process. They selected a firm called Ply out of Ann Arbor. You know, part of it is looking at those firms that have a lot of expertise in this field, in the museum space, and that's how they were selected.
Then last question. I know our collection over there is worth trillions. Maybe we got some duplicates and we could have an auction and raise all the money. Especially you get over there on Third. I remember being over on Third when they drop a dumpster, and people have donated that stuff to the county for relics and history, and it ended up in the dumpsters.
We could just sell it all, then. We wouldn't even need a museum, Dave.
Yeah, we're going to sell it. That's what I say.
There you go. Problem solved.
That's what I say. We could make a fancy buck. I know Arrowheads, we got, if we got duplicates of some of that argonite, 20,000, 30,000, that, a lot of that stuff would add up. I mean, not that we want to sell our collection, but I know some of the stuff, when I used to work down there with Matt, we were tripping over a lot of stuff that Matt says, I don't know why we got to have three of these, or five of these, and was housing all that that long. Maybe we ought to just look into it to possibly entertain because these relics and auctions is another ballgame out there.
Typically, museums try not to fund themselves in that manner because the items are given, you know, to.
But they're not like us. We're special. We need the money.
Well, well, it's a sort of a similar issue that the DIA was facing when they were about ready to lose all their money. And there was, there's talk of selling all the paintings and stuff in order to run the DIA. Museums just generally try to avoid that as a general practice. There is de-acceptioning processes. There is, you know, getting rid of duplicate items and stuff. I do not share your enthusiasm that we would raise trillions, you know, but that does happen.
It's very valuable.
But generally not for.
Our collections are very valuable over there, I know.
Yes, we have some very valuable collections at the county museum.
But thank you.
Commissioner Lemoore.
Thank you. I think in general, majority of us are in favor of this project. How would this affect our rainy day fund, or would it have any effect on that at all? And that's more of a question to Mr. Basonic.
I'm not concerned from a financial management standpoint or financial position. Certainly, it's a, what do we call it, Sue, the event? We have to notify, because it would be a drawdown, but we would simply, we would modify our capital improvement plan to recognize it. But when you have a significant drawdown, you know, we just have to notify the rating agency that this is a planned event and go forward from there. So that's kind of a long response to, I'm not concerned about it. You know, this is a one-time expenditure. It's not an ongoing expenditure. It's not an ongoing draw. It's an investment. It's a capital project that benefits the community, you know, certainly for programming and the culture and the arts. And so I wouldn't have provided the letter. I'd have told those guys, there's no way in heck. Letter's not, I'm not sending a letter to the board. So I'm comfortable with what's before you.
Any additional questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Heinzlerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do I have to wait till public comment to say thank you, or can I say it now?
Thank you so much.
We're now moving to finance matters. Payment of the June 4, 2025 accounts payable, current claims report, and the amount of $1,468,614.34. Could I get a motion, please? Move by Leavens, supported by Lemoore. And I'll turn it over to Sue.
Good evening. On page number one, vendor number 12398, Arbor Inspection Services. It's fire system maintenance at the main jail facility. Vendor number 21010, Boilers, Controls and Equipment. It's replacement of an air handler motor at the main jail, main jail facility. Vendor number 121126, Mac Unlimited. It's the final payment for the awning at the 51 South McComb facility. Page number two, vendor number 140390, Noel Lawn Service. It's May Lawn Services at various county facilities. Vendor number 200051, TM&amp;G Service and Maintenance. Safety glass replacement at the main jail facility with inmate restitution expected. Page number three, vendor number 903122, Joanne F. Lee. It's scheduled debt payments for various drain debt, and that's the end of my list.
Are there questions on the claims report? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lemoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzlerling?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving into consent agenda. Item number one, approval of non-claims. Check registered dated May 23, 2025, in the amount of $310,057.70. Check registered dated May 30, 2025, in the amount of $1,656,916.30. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Lemoore, supported by Asper. Other questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzlerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemoore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have no communications, no public hearings. Moving into old business, the Michigan Indigent Defense Department update. Thank you, Ms. Gans.
Good evening. Mary Ganso's Indigent Defense. We do not have a report yet from Raymond, and it's been requested twice. So I imagine we'll ask them once again so that we have it for the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
If we receive it before, then we'll certainly transmit it to the board. We won't wait till the next meeting.
Is there any new business?
Yes, Your Chairman.
Commissioner Lemoore.
I just wanted to bring forth the CFO search that we tentatively have a June 9 meeting with Dr. Everly and our HR Director to be run by our HR Director. And I just wanted to make that notice to our commissioners here so that they have an opportunity to plan for that date. We're not certain of the time yet, but we'll certainly keep you up to date as soon as we have that finalized.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Chairman. What was the date again?
June 9.
Thank you, Commissioner Lemoore. Now, moving into the second segment of public comment, are there citizens who wish to address the board?
Good evening. Michael Humphries. I'm trustee for the Monroe County Museum System. I just wanted to say thank you. It's been almost a decade, Commissioner Moore, since you appointed me there. And I think that we have been excellent stewards of the money that we've received through the financing we currently have. And this is just a huge step forward. And we're just, just say thank you, and we're going to make you proud.
Thank you. Other citizens, yes?
Brian Egan again. I just wanted to personally say thank you again for this investment on behalf of the Board of Trustees. Many of them are here with us tonight. So the fact that Monroe is putting this investment into our cultural heritage, you will not be disappointed. And I think this is a milestone day for the institution. And so our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren, for 50 years from now, are going to benefit from this move. So thank you so very much. And Mr. Basonic and Sue, thank you for guiding us through this process.
There are no announcements. We'll now move into members' time. Commissioner Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to say, probably one of the reasons, I'm very excited about the museum project. I think it, I mean, those pictures are pretty stunning. And I think your location of the museum is going to really be great for people who live down there, not to mention people coming in. But I really like the idea of one location. I think that expansion at one location instead of redundancy in multiple was very smart. And honestly, personally, for my vote, it was mostly because of the three gentlemen sitting right there. I had another group of people come in without doing the due diligence that you guys have been doing for the past five-plus years on something like this. I probably would have been a little more wary to write that check, so to speak, because it's not my money. It's the taxpayers' money. But having spoken to you guys many times and seeing the financials and knowing your dedication to the museum, I know the project's in good hands. So I appreciate all your guys' hard work. That's all.
Commissioner Swartout?
I'll pass.
Commissioner Lemoore?
Yeah, I too am thankful that we agreed on this financing. And I look forward to the improvements coming to the museum. I think it's going to bring out our heritage, which is, it's a dream here in Monroe. And it's just one way of us to show it throughout the whole state and United States for that matter. So thank you for your diligence and patience with us.
Mr. Heinzlerling?
I'll pass.
Commissioner Asper?
Well, and I'm sure we're going to get a parking plan because there's going to be so many people coming to it, right? I just really appreciate all the work that goes into this, all these background things that go on. We have no idea, you know, how much time goes into all this. And I just appreciate everyone who worked on this. I did want to make an announcement, too. I made this at the last meeting, but it's coming up this Thursday. It's the River Raising Clubhouse Open House. And this is from mental health. And we have a big open house. They have, the clubhouse is opened, and it's going to be Thursday, June 5. That's this Thursday from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. And it's in the old Panera Bread, well, it was never old, but the previous Panera Bread building. So if you don't know where it is, it's right there on Telegraph Road. And we would just love for everybody to show up and support. It's just a really big move for mental health, and we're just so proud of it. So hope you can be there.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Congratulations to Monroe County Museum. And I know we're in good hands. Thank you.
Vice Chairman Leavens.
Pass.
Pass. Mr. Basonic?
I just want to express appreciation on behalf of our, I guess, our project planning team for the governing boards, concurrence on this, really a transformational project. Commissioner Moore, you mentioned about, you know, the location. And I think the location is exceptional. Other places where you go, maybe the museum facility is tucked away somewhere. I mean, our museum is in a prominent location right on Monroe Street. And to be able to take on this kind of a project just really drives home the point of this placemaking initiative in the city of Monroe. And the city is still the county seat. It's got an important role in the overall county. And I'm just really excited about this project for, for the citizens of our community who will be able to use this for many, many, many years and generations to come. So I want to thank the board for your confidence and what we put together over, you're right, it's been a couple of years, a lot of time. And I think, want to demonstrate that there has been this due diligence. We started back in 2022, looking at other facilities. And hopefully that came out in terms of the time and effort that went into it. So we appreciate that. The other thing is, in my report to you, there's a, an open house scheduled for June 19 at the Mylan Middle School. So just, if you could make that, it's an open house. There's not presentation, per se, but there are people there. We'll engage you in terms of what the test well looks like, the depth, what's going to occur there, where the location is, all of those things. And so encourage you, if you can, attend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Where's that at?
Mylan Middle School.
Mylan Middle School?
Yeah, it's in your report from yesterday. There's a separate flyer. It was also, I think, sent out separately as well.
Thank you. I have one other thing I forgot to say. We got something coming up at the battlefield again. We don't want to miss that date, just so we're all aware of it.
June 21. I will pass. This meeting is now adjourned.